Excellent. Well, welcome everyone to the May Planning Commission meeting. I get the honor of serving as your acting chair again with Tracy Away. So hopefully we can have a quick meeting tonight. Good to see everyone virtually. We'll start off with a roll call, please.
Sure, let's go with Chair Banton.
President.
And Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Schweitzer.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
President.
Commissioner Fowler.
Present.
Commissioner Garmendia.
Present.
Commissioner Hubman.
Present.
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Present.
And Commissioner Miller. Don't think is here. Commissioner Williams. Not present either. And Chair Boas, we've noted already, not present. So you do have a quorum.
Great. Did we get Alderwoman Schweitzer?
Yes.
You got you, okay. Great, well, welcome everyone. The next order of business is approval of the minutes. May I get a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Bradley and seconded by, I believe, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Call for vote, please.
Yes, let's go from the top. So Chair Banton.
Aye.
I should call you last, my apologies. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Schweitzer.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Fowler.
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hubman.
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Aye.
And motion passes with all present voting aye.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. So we do not have any action items tonight, but we do have a couple of informational updates on some of the exciting planning initiatives going on in the city. The Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, as well as the Transportation and Mobility Plan. But before we get into those, I want to first extend a formal welcome to a new face on the Planning Commission, as you might have already seen. But Alderwoman Anne Schweitzer is joining us, who is replacing Long Term Planning Commission member Shane Kohn. And we are super excited to have you with us on the commission. So looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, and with that, I will move on to the first informational item, which is the Sustainability and Climate Plan. And I'm not sure who's presenting that, but I will pass it along to them.
Hi, hello, Miriam. I think you were gonna say something first.
Oh, I was only that I've stopped sharing my screen, so you can share yours.
Okay, great. Let's see. It says I need to get a request. Share this. Okay, let's see, can you all see that, okay?
I'm not, oh, there we go.
Okay, great. So thank you so much. I appreciate you all having me this evening. My name's Alisia Russell, Sustainability Director here in the Planning and Urban Design Agency. And I'll provide an update to you all today on the Sustainability and Climate Plan. So just a brief overview of what we'll cover, some background information, the greenhouse gas inventory that's being completed in tandem with the plan, some information on the engagement process. We'll look at a high level of the draft strategies and some next steps. So just to recap, this is the vision for the updated Sustainability Plan. It will become the environmental policies element of the city's comprehensive plan. So we have the Strategic Land Use Plan, the Transportation Mobility Plan, as well as some other elements as well. And we partnered with Canon Design of St. Louis to do this work. And then they have a number of sub consultants on their team as well. It's important for us that this is done through a climate, racial, and economic justice lens. It aligns with those other elements of the city's comprehensive plan, as well as other city department plans. It's to build upon the 2013 Sustainability Plan and the 2017 Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. It's community-driven and implementation-focused. And it's meant to mitigate the impacts of extreme weather and flooding, reduce energy burden, increase community resilience, and protect our assets and investments. So we really need to take action right now, because we know our biggest climate threats are extreme weather, such as heat and cold. We have those hot heat waves, we have blizzards, as well as flooding. This could be flash flooding or river flooding. We've had more frequent cases of extreme weather. And as it impacts our residents' daily lives, it also just impacts their overall health and well-being, while not only costing residents more money, but the city more money as we work to repair and restore after climate events and disasters. And this is a project timeline of kind of where we've been. So this process started in fall of 2024. We worked through an existing conditions analysis, visions and goals, strategy creation. And now we're right at that, like where that star is. We're working on like the first draft of the plan. So it's a very exciting milestone. We have a lot of content, a lot of information, and it's going, we're going through it with a fine-tooth comb in hopes that we will have the final plan done later this summer. So the plan was really rooted in analysis. The consulting team looked at comparable cities. They looked at eight different cities, including Cincinnati, Philadelphia, Oakland, and a few others to examine what their climate action goals and strategies were, what their funding mechanisms were, things they included or different or didn't include. They did a strengths and weaknesses, opportunities, threats analysis, looking at different city reports, plans, and ordinances. So they looked at the original 2013 Sustainability Plan, the Climate Action Adaptation Plan, our Vulnerability Assessment Report for Climate, previous greenhouse gas inventories, and the list goes on. And then they looked at what had been implemented from the 2013 plan. So what worked with that plan and what maybe we still have some challenges with. So as I mentioned, we're doing a greenhouse gas inventory with this. It's kind of like a separate but tandem project. And so Canon Design is responsible for calculating these emissions. They're looking at municipal and community-wide emissions for scope one, two, and three. And our last inventory was done in 2018 with a baseline of 2005. So we compare everything to like the previous inventory and then that 2005 baseline. And this is, of course, done and analyzed in a way that's in compliance with the Global Covenant of Mayors and the ICLI ClearPath Analysis Tool, which is a worldwide leading standard tool for tracking greenhouse gas emissions. So a look into the inventory, some key findings is that we saw an overall decrease from emissions in 2018, about five and a half percent, and a 24.4 reduction from the 2005 baseline. So we can attribute this to electrical grid improvements, such as closure of a coal plant, like the Sioux Plant, and increased renewable energy sources. Ameren's brought on some new energy sources. We had a mild winter in 2023. Our population has decreased a bit. And then overall technology improvements and energy efficiency. So while things are trending downwards, that's great. But we know that buildings remain the top contributor of greenhouse gas emissions at 76%. So on this pie chart, if you look at industrial, commercial, and residential, all of those together equal 76%, which is buildings. Some good key finding, or an important key finding from this, is that our emissions per capita has decreased since 2005 by 13%, but it's actually up slightly from 2018. And this remains higher than the US average. So down here on the bottom right, we're at 22.7 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per person, where the national average is 17.6. And that's equivalent to like each person driving almost like 58,000 miles a year in like an average gasoline car. So the focus of this plan is really kind of three elements. One foundational, are we building the effective infrastructure, funding, capacity, policies to address aggressive climate goals centered on what the city has jurisdiction over? We want an expanded equity lens from this. So are we further embedding racial equity and environmental justice into these strategies? And that we've heard that we really need to work on pragmatic solutions that address the many barriers that there are with climate work. So that's really the focus for the updated 2025 plan. So for overall engagement, we had a community advisory group of 21 members that met at specific times throughout the plan and worked really hand-in-hand with each other, providing feedback and information. We had focus groups on priority communities like elderly, North City St. Louis. We have Southeast City St. Louis residents, as well as like urban agriculture, farmers, workers, renters. We took insight from the neighbor, from the various neighborhood plans, the Sloop and the TMP, talked with city departments, various stakeholders, businesses, large, small, as well as different sustainability nonprofits, and also a community-wide survey was done. The themes from this really kind of focused on this list here. So what the community said is they want to reduce their reliance on fossil fuels. They want to improve connectivity, so we want safe passage and alternative transportation options. We want a better sense of community and be free from illegal dumping, so safety and cleanliness. They want to ensure that the city has capacity and resources to implement and maintain the strategies or programs or initiatives put forth from this. And they want to assure, ensure that we're focusing on disinvested areas and people, repairing past harms, and prioritizing areas in need first. And they are working, they would like to see more resiliency. So are we being adaptive to extreme heat and weather, flooding, and just be more proactive and prepared for these types of events? And then last, with implementation, they recognize that this can be done through small wins and big projects, but we have to be mindful of the barriers that come with this work, as well as work with our community partners on these efforts. So this plan, like I said, is foundational, right? We're really kind of looking at the next five years. So from 2025 to 2030 is where the bulk and majority of this work is happening, and the strategy is aligned with these next five years. So it is still ambitious, but we're working on setting up these foundational elements. Do we have the organizational tools? Do we have the necessary policies and procedures to implement our ultimate goals? Are we enabling the infrastructure, such as renewable energy or improved transportation and mobility? And are we continuing and improving existing work? So once we kind of get that first step done, which is what this plan outlines, next we'll work on ramping up the requirements. So get more electric buildings, more renewable energy, make our waste system more efficient, reduce vehicle miles traveled. And then the pie in the sky goal is standardizing clean energy. So we have limited fossil fuel use, we're using electric vehicles, we have sustainable waste and food management. So this plan was designed with kind of three pillars in mind. So the first pillar is promote a safe and healthy climate resilient city. So this is expanding and improving the city's physical systems, infrastructure services, to enable a more climate-friendly city. Pillar two is expand city and community capacity for climate resilience. So building capacity, ensuring we have sufficient resources for operations, as well as enhance the community's understanding and recognition of the benefits of climate practices. And then the third is focused on advancing energy efficiency while reducing energy burden. So increase access to resources, initiatives that help building owners understand their energy use, promote upgrades, that we can further reduce energy use and water use, while improving overall health and maintain affordability. So within the pillars, there will be a goal, as well as a strategy, and then a number of actions under each of those. And each action was evaluated against this following criteria. They were, they received like a plus, a minus, or a neutral if these things were covered in that action. So we looked at environmental justice, human impact, total costs, environmental implications, as well as implementation. And so I'm gonna go through at a very high level, like each goal and its accompanying strategy, which is included in the memo that we provided. But so it'll be a lot more talking, but it'll be a high level. Hopefully, we'll go through it pretty quickly. So pillar one, promote safe and healthy climate resilient city. So goal A, establish a safe and multimodal network by repairing 40 miles of sidewalks per year and offering 25 miles of protected bikeways. So this is really speaking to the Transportation Mobility Plan, which is specific to building the infrastructure envision. But this is the Sustainability and Climate Plan will speak to the climate and eco benefits. So are we reducing vehicle miles traveled, reducing air pollution? Transportation accounts for 21% of our greenhouse gas emissions. So this is a huge chunk of those emissions, but also it was a theme that came up in our community engagement. So we want to encourage and incentivize transit and bicycling, or public transit and bicycling. A goal B is integrate green infrastructure and nature-based solutions into 50% of new stormwater streets and other public facilities to improve resilience, biodiversity, and community health. So how are we improving resilience to flooding and extreme heat? Are we ensuring safe access to parks and green spaces, sequestering carbon? This way, we can have cleaner air, improved water quality, more shade, and just general cooler temperatures in the city. Goal C is focused on the tree canopy. How do we establish and maintain a 40% tree canopy? So there was a need to, how do, need to consider how do we protect our mature trees? And then help prevent and maintain our hazardous trees in the same time. And then through this, we can increase shade and improve and mitigate stormwater management. Goal D is around landfill and waste management. So we've worked on a increasing landfill diversion, but ultimately it's to reduce illegal dumping and litter. So that way, we can have an impact on the further overall environment to eliminate clogged sewers or any vector-borne diseases, improve the overall sense of safety and well-being in neighborhoods. So while we work to reduce waste and work towards a circular economy, we can reduce greenhouse gas emissions and save money for residents and the city. Goal E is about the policies to ensure that new development has community benefits that can add to a low-carbon future and resiliency. So this goal and strategies are really about sustainable building guidance to make sure we're making good development choices that are climate-friendly and resilient. So now we're in pillar two. So this is expand city and community capacity for climate resilience. These, these strategies are pretty straightforward. We know that residents know the best way to address their issues and cities, the city should be their partner. We need to continue to educate and expand knowledge of climate-friendly practices, lead by example, and continue to build partnerships. And then there's also a need for clear communication channels on the benefits of these types of actions or strategies, or even for response or preparedness for climate-related disasters. Goal G is pretty straightforward, build city capacity to implement this plan. So we need sufficient staff and climate needs to be, and excuse me. So we need sufficient staff and climate needs to be an integral lens in decision-making. We know energy plays a huge role in our future, such as energy efficiency and renewable energy. And we may need a dedicated department or division focused on this pivotal work. So capacity is really at the heart of this, and having staff dedicated to energy-related work for businesses and residents alike. Goal H is, you know, create opportunities for extended city resources. So we have a wealth of great organizations. A lot of the community engagement brought up, well, there's this organization doing this, or they already do that, and we know that. So we want to continue and support and work with them to accelerate the Climate Action Plan. So we need to find funding and, and further develop our green workforce, so we have enough skilled work, skilled workers to support these types of actions. Goal I is around data monitoring and transparency. So we want to be able to use technology to reduce greenhouse gas emissions or monitor for disasters, so we can respond and make decisions faster. This means we need updated systems for collecting data, so we can also track progress, highlight areas of concern, and drive decisions. So now we're in pillar three, which is all about energy. So advance energy efficiency while reducing energy burden. We know our greatest emissions come from buildings. However, most of our energy is coal and natural gas. So that makes it difficult for us to move to electrification and actually reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So we need to promote energy efficiency, implement what renewable energy, energy we can, and help reduce and mitigate the energy burden of our residents. So this strategy is focused on increasing access to resources to help improve energy, building energy efficiency, and ultimately improve health and maintain affordability. Goal K is focused on expanding and enhancing our benching and building performance standards. This is one of the greatest tools we have right now to drive emissions down. So how do we make those requirements a little bit stricter and bring more build, large buildings onboard? Goal L is around strategic electrification and preparing for electrification. So as I said, most of our electricity comes from coal. So electrifying actually won't reduce our emissions right now. So this is about prepping for the future in alignment with Ameren's Integrated Resource Plan and how Ameren plans to bring more renewables online. So we're looking at what the city has control over, how to reduce energy burden for residents, and bring more renewables to support the grid. Goal M is around having the leader, having the city maintain its leadership role. So we're doing great in terms of municipal operations and reducing greenhouse gas emissions, but we need to continue to lead by example. So how do we optimize energy efficiency upgrades for our municipal buildings, monitor our own energy use, and become more resilient? So that, that's all the, all of the goals right there. So here are some next steps. So draft one, as I mentioned, is ready right now and in review by the core team. It's just text only. Draft two is coming next in about, at the beginning of June, this will have text and visuals. So the city's core team, dedicated to working on this project. We have our community advisory group, city departments, department heads. And then draft three will come shortly after that, go back to the core team. You all, as the planning commission, and hopefully be ready for a public review in July sometime. And then while all that's happening, we'll also be reviewing and finalizing the greenhouse gas report tracking tool and making sure that it aligns with the plan's strategies and language. And then we hope for a plan adoption in early fall 2025. Sorry, that was a lot of words there, but thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you very much, Alisia. For that, I will go through the list here. If any commissioners have questions, starting with Alderwoman Schweitzer.
Thank you. I really appreciate the presentation. There are a few things that, that stood out to me that I wanted to ask a little bit more about. One of the things you mentioned was specifically what the city has jurisdiction over. And I've been struggling with that a lot with the state and federal landscape and what we're dealing with in a climate change reality and those places. You know, especially with the state recently having a bill that would have made it so the city couldn't have energy benchmarking happening. So I would like you to just maybe talk for a minute more about, you know, some of those things that kind of popped out to you as where we're missing out on in terms of what we could be doing better there.
Sure, yeah. So like advocacy around that came up throughout the engagement process. And we feel that we can work with those partners and be better prepared to have a larger voice at the table when, while being cognizant of preemption at the same time. So are we working with other local governments across the state that we all align on the same type of opinion on a matter? That's one of the outlined actions. And then also working with those local advocacy organizations when it makes sense to help push and the, push the policies that we need here to protect our residents.
And that makes sense to me. Yeah, I was thinking, in addition with the, the city jurisdiction, was the sort of regional lens of this plan and how we were gonna work with other elected.
Yeah.
And we've been doing some work with a group called Cool Cities, which is a group of elected officials that are from around mostly the St. Louis County region that have been participating and trying to, you know, have a single voice on different issues that come up and to interact more about what our strategies are. So that seems like a good fit for, you know, as this plan moves forward.
Yeah, that sounds fantastic. And also in development of this plan, because the East West Gateway is also working on their Regional Climate Action Plan, we worked really closely with them to make sure that our targets and strategies align with theirs. So we're really fueling each of those plans together, because their plan will be more, I guess, like overarching, but maybe not as implementable as this one. So when we say what the city has jurisdiction over, it's gonna complement East West Gateways Plan and then focus on things that we can currently control.
I appreciate that. I'm, I know we're having the TMP presentation a little bit later, so I am looking forward to hearing more about the overlap, as so much of our missions, you know, in addition to buildings, comes from our transportation. So that, I'm glad that was like the first goal you brought up is the bikeways and, and, you know, pedestrian walking and reducing our dependence on cars. So I'm looking forward to that presentation. You mentioned staffing up a, you know, around implementing this plan. And one of the things that I just kept noticing over and over again is how many of the goals are within a department's purview already. So I think when we're thinking about staffing up, it's also, it's thinking about how those departments are in place to do this and how they take over each piece. So I'm interested, I'm glad that department heads will get this so early, because that ownership is gonna be crucial in order to implement this. Yeah, thank you for your time and letting me ask questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Thank you so much. I don't wanna, I don't have any questions, really. I do want to get more into it myself and, and be more of an advocate for it, right? Because I have a constituent who is a champion for sustainability in the planning commission, Mr. Irv Hamilton. And he always comes to the neighborhood meetings, talking about sustainability, talking about the, looking forward to this plan and implementation and everything. So I'm just excited to be, be able to be here for that work. And so please, let me know how I can be of best assistance in moving the plan forward.
Yep, thank you. Irv is great.
Yes.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Bradley. He still with us? Did he have to hop off? Might have had to step away for a second, so I'll move on to Commissioner Fowler.
Um, thanks for the presentation. No real questions, I'm just happy to see a lot of these goals on here, especially the, you know, ones about transportation, tree canopy, green infrastructure, being a civil engineer, and then also being on the TMP community. Oh my God, I forget this every time, the CAC.
Community Advisory Committee.
Thank you. It's two Cs and an A, I don't, yeah, sorry. But um, no, this is really great. So thanks for your presentation, looking forward to this.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Garmendia.
Thanks for the presentation update. I had a follow-up question about the staffing component. And as part of the plan, will there be, I mean, obviously to do all of these things, this is not just like do this, we're gonna get this all done next year. But is there gonna be a timeline component to hiring? So I want to know that, like, the Board of Aldermen should, you know, if we're following this plan, if we're truly adopting this plan, then in your, next year's budget, we should see in these departments, this addition, you know, like you should have a team. The year after that, like, you know, so is there gonna be a timeline component to the staffing up to execute on these recommendations?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I know it really depends on the, the funding element as well. So it could come hand-in-hand, but that's something certainly we can add, having that timeline in there. These are still very draft strategies, but I think knowing what to expect makes a lot of sense.
Okay, yeah, because I think that'd be a really important tool for at least the Board of Aldermen to, and the public to hold the executive branch account. the executive branch accountable for, you know, having that staff, you know, having plans to staff up and implement the plan and I, I think that would be an important component for just monitor, you know, instead of waiting for the next, you know, 10 years from now when we're like,
Yeah.
So did we make any progress on, on these recommendations or how far away are we? Just, just how we have, we are empowered to make those more annual. Like, you know, that kind of annual accountability exercise, like, are we making, are we behind schedule? Are we on track?
Um, yes.
That would be great because obviously it's a lot of recommendations and not all of them are going to be, it's not all like on you to to do, though it is nice to have, you know, such a, a big robust list of things you can be doing. But, and I guess my follow up question is, what as part of that staffing question, what is going to be explicitly your charge? Like next year, like what are, what are some of the pillars or goals that are explicitly going to be your responsibility?
Right. So there are a lot of strategies in there, but what we did was look at each strategy and then identify champions. So if some of the work is already happening in other city departments, we know who should take the lead on that. And then if they're, is it someone currently or it's around more of the internal capacity building or communication building, that generally is going to fall on Office of Sustainability, but there are a few areas where we know there is a gap, like certainly around like the energy component. Like we do have the Office of Building Performance Standards, which is doing great work, but there needs to be more work done in that area. So we've identified those in the plan. I would say Office of Sustainability is probably listed on all of them, but there are some that are definitely identified for specific departments.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Hubbard.
Yeah, I was actually, Christine, you kind of beat me to the punch with that. I was going to actually ask it in a bit broader sense. Is the consultant team kind of preparing sort of an overall implementation recommendation, you know, like a timeline sequence prioritization, some things will be easier to do than others. Just kind of a roadmap how to do this. It's an intense amount of work. I can't imagine, I, I, I just imagine it will take a while to build get the capacity, get things up and running to do some of the things, but some of them could probably happen right away.
Right.
That was a component of their work or if that's something that you're going to have to sort through once the plan is done.
So what we did was with the evaluation criteria, there's implementation is one of the categories. And then there's like five different like subcategories under that. And in the plan itself, each strategy will have like an identifier with it. So of those five things, like which has the highest score? So each of the strategies will receive a score and then we'll be able to determine which has the, which should be prioritized. Plus we've been checking in with the community advisory group on what they think would be implementable or should be of priority at the moment. So it's a, it's a combination of, we'll have to take a look at what makes the most sense now and what's been identified in the plan.
Yeah, I would imagine the current political climate has thrown some risk at some of the implementation strategies that maybe didn't, wasn't there. So I don't know how real time some of this is or if you're. Anyway, I was also glad to see the coordination with East West Gateway and the work they're doing.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Jorgensen.
Thank you. And thank you for the work you're doing on this. On goal A about repairing sidewalks and offering protected bike lanes. Do you know, so you said the goal is to repair forty miles of sidewalks per year. Do you know how many miles of sidewalks we're repairing now?
That is an excellent question that I believe Scott may have the answer to. So I worked with Scott and the TMP team to identify those strategies. Scott, would you know that by?
Sure. So Commissioner, I don't have a, a precise figure, but we looked at this as we were compiling the Complete Streets Report, which we did for the first time for twenty twenty four. And we identified the majority of sidewalk work that had taken place in calendar year twenty twenty four. And we were at roughly twenty miles. I don't have that figure right in front of me. For last year, now that number is going to, you know, bounce around a little bit every year. We, the city, and this is kind of a current initiative, but we don't have a complete GIS map of our whole sidewalk network right now. So we don't know the precise mileage of sidewalks we have. But we estimate we have about two thousand miles of sidewalks. And if, if we were replacing them all on a sustainable cycle in terms of a concrete sidewalk lifecycle, which is roughly fifty years, that means we would need to be doing roughly forty miles a year to kind of go through the whole city on that cycle. And so we're doing a, you know, a fair percentage of that, maybe half today. And so forty miles a year would be aspirational, but it's, it's, you know, it's not an order of magnitude different than what we're doing right now, certainly.
All right, thank you. That's, that's good information to have. And then the second part of that goal is offering twenty five miles of protected bike lanes. Is that reaching a goal of twenty five total or it's not building twenty five new miles per year?
That figure was over the next five years is how that was, how that'll be framed in the sustainability plan goal. And so we are, again, I don't have the precise number in front of me, but we're, we're north of fifteen miles of protected bike way already funded that will be built really in the next, you know, this year to the next three years. So if we continue to kind of add projects to that in like the out years and years four and five, it's certainly possible that we could get to that twenty five miles of new protected bikeways in the next five years.
Can I ask a quick follow up on that? Is that twenty five miles over five years that the city will build or is that twenty five miles built in the city?
Twenty five miles built within the city.
You're welcome to do twenty five.
I'll get out my shovel. Start.
But just to be clear, that would include, include stuff like the Brickline Greenway?
Exactly. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. You're muted.
Thank you. Alicia, I really enjoyed your presentation and the amount of work you've done so far. But the, the one area though that I have questions about, and you mentioned in goal M, the city departments. So you kind of mentioned when you were answering one of the questions that there are some data that the various departments are already implementing energy initiatives over the last several years. And so I'd like to encourage you and hopefully you're going to do this, include that progress with a projected path going forward. And hopefully that includes some analysis of energy savings or energy payback. Or a process to evaluate those. Can you talk a little bit about that? You're shaking your head. So.
Yeah, absolutely. So because of the work that's already happening, especially with the building or with the facilities department and as well as our building, our Office of Building Performance Standards, which is external, like external buildings. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to use an intermediary goal tracking tool for our internal goals, but also the ICLI ClearPath two point O software, which can help us track what's been going on through the various interventions that exist and future interventions. So we could calculate. Are we achieving our goal? Are we on track? Or do we need to tweak or change a certain intervention? So that is definitely being considered and should be one of the first steps actually of this plan is building that kind of database of information and knowing what we're tracking and what we need to track.
Okay. So do the various departments all have goals right now? And are they going to all be challenged to come up with their own goals that will be evaluated by some kind of benchmarking tool?
So we will, we are currently in the process of benchmarking every city municipal building. So once we know what type of energy we're actually using, then we'll be able to determine the goal from there.
Okay. So you mentioned buildings, but what about activities? So there, that are not in a building?
Activities. Yeah. So transportation wise, I know the Equipment Services Division, Fleet Management, they have a really robust system. So they're like maximizing each life of each vehicle as well as reducing like the fuel costs, but I'm not aware of like what their exact goals are with that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
I'm going to be short because I have a lot of background noise around me, but good job. I'm still processing, so no questions at the moment.
Great. Thank you. We'll jump back to Commissioner Bradley.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. Had to take a call from the boss. So I just want to remind you, Alicia, and a great presentation, and I know my staff said EST and facilities are working with you and certainly everything's coming together very, very nicely. Just remind you of the steam loop in the city. SWMDC Solid Waste Management and Development Corporation, which I am the president of. The chief of staff is the treasurer, vice president and the street director is the secretary treasurer and the board of directors. District Energy at its best, one fire heats many buildings, so cuts down the carbon footprint and coming to fifteen city buildings near you in the future is district cooling. We are working on building a cooling plant down off of Tucker Boulevard. So hoping that we can get more people on these energy efficient heating and cooling systems, which by the way, universities, hospitals, and many European cities use today. So we definitely support that and anything we can do to work along with you, we're glad to do it.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Just a few questions for me to wrap up. First of all, a great presentation. And I am thrilled to see that many of the goals, while certainly aspirational and in some senses, also seem quantifiable and potentially very reachable should the policies and funding come into place. So that, that's great to hear and hopefully great progress is made on that. Just a couple of questions on the, some of the data that you had prevented or presented. You had shown a graph that showed overall community sort of emissions and how that had reduced slightly over the past few years, but I'm curious specifically on municipal city of St. Louis emissions, how, how the city is doing with its buildings and fleet and all that fun stuff.
Yeah, the city's doing a fantastic job. So our emissions account for about two point six percent of the all city emissions community wide, but there's been a decrease from twenty eighteen of about twenty three percent and then a thirty nine percent reduction from that two thousand and five baseline. And that's because of the, the great work that our facilities department is doing as well as streets. They did a LED retrofit upgrade across the whole city. And then we did a number of like building automations and upgrades recently to our largest buildings as well.
Okay, great. No, that's, that's good to hear. Second question is in regards to the previous sustainability plan. Do you, are there any highlights that you might be able to share about certain things that we did achieve or, or did not even come close to that we need to focus on a little bit more?
Yeah. So the original plan was really broad and overarching and I would say maybe a handful of the like goals were actually like checked off as completed by various city departments, but a lot of them were still in progress. So it's my understanding that's pretty common across the country with different sustainability plans. But of the ones that were implemented were the Complete Streets Ordinance, the LED retrofits. And then the third one, I believe, is the greenhouse gas inventory. Just like a procedure for collecting that information. So when we did the twenty twenty three inventory this year, each of the departments were like, no problem. I got that. I know where to find this. So those things have been very helpful.
Great. And last question is in regards to electric cation of buildings, for example, and you know, granted that our, a lot of our electricity, as you mentioned, does come from, from fossil fuels, but I'm curious, has the city explored the possibility of adding renewables? Either to city property or infrastructure on its buildings partnering with Ameren to install solar, that type of thing.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the actions specifically parting with Ameren on either micro grids and renewable sources of energy. We have some great buildings that would be ideal for solar and it would generate a lot of electricity. It's just a matter of funding and ensuring that our roofs are in the right state to handle that type of weight.
Okay.
Chairman, let's start. Just like to do a couple more things while we have her with us. One, it's, it's, people have talked about tracking, she or mention of the, of the ICLI product. That's very important to be able to have. So we do tracking. The greenhouse gases, having the city having done three periodic greenhouse gases is an important thing. It's nice that we have our own data because one of the things about the federal government, it's going to be a little amorphous about what it tracks and what it tells us to do. We'll have our own data to help us tell us what to do. That's, that's a good thing. She mentioned that, of course, you'll get more about the report and the, and the plan ahead. And the next time we come to the planning commission, but also about the champions in departments. Cause some of the things is we have the same sort of needs to do, but finding a new way to do it. And so those champions are important. With that, Alicia, I'd love you to just think about the fifteen page, excuse, not fifteen page, the fifteen bullet point topics we discuss when we have our weekly meetings. And just tell the crew and the planning commission four or five highlights from that recently. May relate to a conference you attended or an activity, but that'd be kind of fun for them to get a feel.
Sure, sure. So yeah, I do a, a number of things and a number of different places. Obviously the Sustainability and Climate Plan is my number one priority, but I also support our city innovation team, like they're working at the intersection of climate action and racial wealth equity. I've supported the Equipment Services Division and around direct pay. So like, are we getting federal dollars back for implementing and putting in service electric vehicles and chargers? I work with like a local coalition of communities called MISO Triple C, which is a collection of local governments across our intercontinental regional energy district transmission line. So from Canada down to Louisiana to ensure that we have like a solid voice and are aware of like what type of electrical transmission is coming online and we're preparing our communities and have a voice in what needs to be done. So we have enough energy to support our needs. And most recently I went to the Midwest Climate Collaborative meet, their annual conference, and that was in Madison, Wisconsin. I also serve on the steering committee there. So it was really great to see all the Midwestern cities and a number of other partnering organizations and institutions talk about our different challenges. And my highlight of that meeting was around data centers and you know, what, how cities are reacting and interacting with these new developments.
And one little quick tidbit, you went to the post office and mailed something this week. Tell us.
Yeah. So we, I went and mailed an extension for our calendar year twenty twenty four direct pay. So we file like a tax return essentially to be able to receive this money back for clean energy investments, like the electric vehicles and chargers. And we just need a little bit more time to make sure that we're in like setting up an actual process and procedure for filing these types of reports.
And who provides us with that money?
Uh, the Equipment Services, B P S.
And the federal government.
Yeah, the federal government, okay.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, obviously, you're uh not busy at all, Alicia.
Our office is about fifty feet away from Miriam's.
No, it's, that's an incredible amount of work, and we're so thrilled that uh you're part and leading, leading those efforts, so thank you for all that you do.
No, thank you for having me.
All right, with that, we will move on to our second informational item, which is the Transportation Mobility Plan. I will pass it over to I assume Scott.
Scott, I think you're muted.
How about now?
Crystal clear.
And uh, screen is up, right?
It is.
Great, um, well, good evening, uh Commissioners and guests. I'm gonna provide an update on the Transportation and Mobility Plan, Planning Process. Um, a memo went out to the Planning Commission um detailing um some, some top level goals, as well as a little bit of information about the rest of the plan. Um, and we thought it would be a good idea to just sort of begin the dialogue on the content of the plan um and give a chance for some feedback on the memo. I'm gonna be covering basically the, the same content as is in the memo. And I just wanna remind folks um, the, the T N P is really a collaborative effort between um Planning and Urban Design, Board of Public Service, Streets Department, Mayor's Office, and Office of Disabled, there's representatives from all those offices on our core team that have been managing the plan. And the last big update, and this is, today is not a big update, um maybe a small to medium update, but the last big update we did was at the conclusion of the first round of public engagement. Um, we did that update to the December Planning Commission, um, which talked about the public engagement process and the information derived through that engagement. And we expect, um, we'll be back with a complete update covering um details in the, in all the chapters of the plan. Um, relatively soon, potentially uh next month in June, so we get a full plan update. Um, but this should be a good briefing to kind of lay the foundation for that update um coming up. So I'm gonna cover the introduction, um, which in the plan itself will contain the vision and those top line goals of the plan. And the vision of the plan, um, vision statement, create a safe, connected, and well-maintained transportation network that enhances quality of life, fosters equitable mobility options, and supports sustainable growth in the city of St. Louis. Um, and so the, the three key themes um in the plan that all the detail in the chapters will support are safety, connectivity, and maintenance and operations of the city's transportation systems. So the first theme is safety, um, and what does that mean? It means um decision-making should prioritize the safety of all transportation users, including pedestrians, cyclists, transit riders and drivers. And, you know, the why is really important here, um, so of course, many people are unfortunately killed or seriously injured while traveling in St. Louis. Um, and that has a devastating impact on many residents' lives, either through life-altering injuries, loss of life, um, loss of friends and family members. Um, the impacts are really significant, and throughout the planning process, um, residents and city staff really emphasize that safety should be our top priority within the plan. So the, the goals related to safety are to reduce deaths and serious injuries by fifty percent due to traffic crashes by twenty fifty. This is the same goal that's in the recently adopted East West Gateway Gateway to Safer Roadways Plan. Um, this is uh an achievable goal if we continue to invest in safe systems, um, design, education, um, and enforcement where appropriate. And if this goal were met, it would mean over the lifespan of the next um twenty-five years, you know, many dozens fewer people would be killed while traveling, and many, many hundreds of people would avoid serious injury while traveling, um, so cumulatively would have a huge um impact. Second goal is to improve safety and access uh for children and anyone with limited mobility. Um, throughout the planning process, we recognize that the needs of children often do not show up in sort of normal transportation planning or in sort of typical engineering guidance. Um, but children, of course, make up a big proportion of the community. And the transportation system, I think, you know, particularly impacts residents with children in terms of um where they where they travel with their kids, how they travel with their kids. Um, you know, the independent travel the kids can do when they're old enough to do so, these are all big factors in choices people make about um where to live and how to um access the things they wanna do. The third goal is to design streets for their intended purpose. This means that um, you know, the primary goal of some streets is to move cars, um, but there are many other types of streets that have um a diverse array of functions. Um, so of course, the design inputs for a neighborhood street, residential access are very different than the design for a high-capacity street, and the details of that get reflected in the chapter that um is the Street Design Framework with a lot of illustrated guidance um for street types throughout the city. And then the fourth goal is curb dangerous driving, um, and create efficiencies for people traveling through modernizing technologies. Um, this can mean a number of things related to technology and policy. Um, it could mean things like red light cameras, uh, focused on safety, it could mean things like continuing to upgrade the city's traffic signal system to make sure we can utilize the most modern technologies in traffic signals um that can provide traveling efficiencies, but also in some cases, increase compliance um just through appropriate signal timing and um and, you know, sort of technical details along those lines. The second key theme is um connectivity. That means enhancing multimodal connections within neighborhoods and across neighborhoods throughout the city of St. Louis. So many trips are short, um, and something that was expressed a lot through the planning process is that there's many trips people would like to be able to have more options than how they take, so they, they would like to be less prone to getting in the car for a lot of trips. Um, wide roads often create barriers for people traveling between neighborhoods. Oftentimes, you can get around inside your neighborhood pretty well, but when you sort of cross to the next neighborhood, you get into a different transportation mindset, even if it's not particularly far away. Um, approximately forty-six percent of households in St. Louis own either one car or zero cars. So that means there are many residents who, I think we all want, you know, good multimodal options, but for many residents, it's really essential, it's an essential component of how they need to navigate the city. Um, and another co- uh connectivity component is that, you know, we have a great street grid um that developed primarily before World War Two, which is a huge asset. It has been eroded in some cases through new infrastructure or street closures. Um, but there's a big idea, I think, that runs throughout the plan of not creating new infrastructure barriers and um you know, bridging those barriers where they exist um through, through future projects. And the five connectivity goals, um, so prioritize um implementing the existing ADA Transition Plan, focus on accessible connections for all St. Louis residents. This, and maybe I'll say here that a lot of these goals are things that, that throughout the city are already happening, in some cases, they are happening um on a slightly informal basis, and so a lot of you know, part of the role of this plan is to formalize some of those already informal practices, but to really, you know, strengthen them through the planning process. So we've been, the city has been um funding the ADA Transition Plan the last few years. I wanna emphasize, we should continue to do that. Second goal is proactively build and maintain a continuous and accessible sidewalk network across St. Louis. Um, the, the bones of that network are already there, it's just in many cases sidewalk conditions are not what they could be. Continue to expand the cycling and greenway network to safely connect destinations across the city. Um, and for this goal, you know, for the greenway network, the path network especially, um, it's good to remind everyone that more than half the users are people who are not riding bikes. Um, so that's all the other things you can do on a path or a greenway, jogging, walking, pushing a baby stroller. Um, people feel very strongly, very positively around the public space created by a greenway network, and we are expanding it, and as we connect more greenways, it'll become um even more desirable and um useful. Fourth goal is to continue to support the delivery and expansion of quality transit and other mobility services. Um, most transit the city doesn't directly provide, but there's an obvious role because that transit is provided on um city infrastructure on our streets, and there's a role to sort of integrate street and roadway design that can enhance transit. And then there are some um transit services, on-demand transit services that the city um has directly funded or participated in funding as kind of a pass-through to other agencies who provide that service, and that can be um, a, a really important component in, especially in neighborhoods where there is, at the moment, there is not convenient access within the neighborhood to a grocery store or to a doctor, and so that travel is gonna be necessary, and especially to residents who don't have direct access to a car or can't drive. And then Goal Five, which I touched on on the last slide, is reduce or mitigate existing infrastructure barriers and avoid creating new barriers going forward. The third theme is maintenance operations. That means ensuring long-term infrastructure resilience, reliability, predictable maintenance, and aesthetic appeal. Um, we wanna make sure infrastructure remains safe, accessible, and reliable for all users. Proactive maintenance allows um better planning coordination, sort of a, a longer on-ramp to projects, lets us think through them and appropriately scope them. A smooth and well-functioning transportation network improves user satisfaction and builds trust in local government and public agencies. And th- this last point is something that um, I think was an interesting topic that came up fairly often in the planning process, is that, you know, when there's a, an improvement, and let's say a utility tears it up, people have a sense of like community neglect or even disrespect when, you know, the utility doesn't put the street back um how it was before or in better condition than before. So the four goals, um, with maintenance and quality, implement an asset management approach for more proactive decision-making about transportation infrastructure, especially key infrastructure like arterial roadways, greenways. Um, put major roadways on a repaving schedule and allocate a citywide funding source to the activity each year. Um, the, the chapters on policy will uh provide a lot more guidance on how this could happen. Um, this is, obviously, I think relies on um decisions on leadership and budgets in the future, this is not something that can just happen within um our existing budget structure for transportation, but if we could move to this type of what I call programmatic or periodic um paving and maintenance schedule. Um, I think it would allow us to much better plan and execute on arterial roadway projects. Um, third goal is define parameters around arterial roadway features. Um, where we need higher quality, more durable pavement markings, um, enhanced signals, improved signals, or just other better quality features in the roadway. The, the top, the first three here also directly interface with the safety goals. Um, within the Safety Action Plan Chapter, if you look at the roadways where we have the, the large majority of fatal and serious crashes, they are on arterial roadways, um, and so if we're making programmatic investments in those roadways, we're gonna be able to drive those crash rates down and have better safety outcomes, and the arterial roadways, just by their nature, are more complex, they require more planning and engineering, they require bigger budgets, and they are sort of poorly suited for ward capital type projects. Um, and then the fourth goal is improve pavement and sidewalk restoration standards during and after utility and development work. Um, something I touched on a little earlier, a lot of utility work is inevitable, we have a lot of old infrastructure under the ground, it does break, there's nothing we can do about that. When it breaks, it needs to be repaired, so there's going to be um excavations in the roadway and sidewalks. Um, we can't prevent that, um, but I think there can be improvements to how things are put back together um after things break. Um, the next couple slides, we're gonna talk just quickly about um who the T N P is for, who can use it, and then talk specifically about um, its role for the Planning Commission, at least in an introductory way, talk about that. So the T N P is for really a broad array of user groups, um, I think most importantly for internally for city leadership, elected officials, um, department leaders and staff, um, providing guidance on, on budgets, goals alignment across selected officials and agencies, design decisions internal to projects, project prioritization, and um transportation-related policy. Um, partner agencies and infrastructure stakeholders, so this can be a really great tool for, to help us communicate with other agencies like MoDOT and Great Rivers Greenway and Metro Transit about what the city's priorities are. Um, we want it to be a educational tool for residents, so when they are interacting with their local government, talking about transportation projects, we have a, a common reference. Um, you know, for terms and design features that we can both look at simultaneously. And then developers and builders across the city who are often um themselves making you know, streetscape or roadway improvements in conjunction with projects, so they can look to the T N, to the T N P for street design guidance, um, you know, street and land use integration. Um, and, you know, there's going to be guidance on managing construction and utility-related impacts as well. And then for the Planning Commission um itself, so the adopted T N P, it'll provide a basis for review of elements um that the Planning Commission either sees frequently or occasionally, so these are things like redevelopment plans, planned unit development or P U Ds, street and right-of-way vacation applications. Um, potential future form-based zoning district review, although I know, of course, we are getting into the um the upgrade to the zoning code, um, so, you know, the exact way it interfaces with form-based districts could, could potentially change. Um, and then, of course, occasionally, um, the, the Planning Commission will review um Chapter three fifty-three redevelopment plans, and I think the T N P can provide guidance in the development of those plans as well as um you know, when they need to be amended for particular projects. And then indirect uses, and I think this is an important one, there is um the City's Capital Committee sets expenditures within the city's capital budget annually, considering all categories of capital needs in St. Louis. And there's overlapping membership of the Planning Commission and the Capital Committee. Um, uh, Mr. Bradley, B P S President is on both of those. Um, there is frequently the same designee from the President of the Board of Alderman's Office, and there's potentially more overlap um with alderpeople depending on who is um who is assigned to serve on the Capital Committee. And so in terms of, you know, priority projects that are in the Safety Action Plan, I think that members of the Planning Commission who have a, a good knowledge of what is in the T N P can also inform the rest of the Capital Committee about, you know, the resources in the T N P and the prioritization of key projects, especially related to safety, that need um citywide capital expenditures. So, coming up, um. There will be a full update that goes, that does a deeper dive into all the chapters of the T M P potentially um next month at the meeting in June. Um, around that time, well, really beginning now, um, we can be available for. Briefings or discussions, feedback with individual members of the planning commission if anyone is interested or. We could schedule something for a group um to discuss elements of the T M P. Um, when the complete draft plan is ready, we of course will be transmitting it to you. Um, and that will open the period where there is a public comment period that will be on the draft plan, which will be for at least thirty days. Just like the strategic land use plan, um residents will be able to make. Um, online comments and review um drafts in person. Then we will assess and incorporate those public comments as as needed into the T M P. Um, and when all that work is um complete, we we will return back to the planning commission. Um, hopefully for T M P adoption, um likely in uh fall of this year. And then. Some upcoming public engagement um is continuing. Uh, we've got some big events coming up. I think we're going to have a fun and lively uh bike network network workshop. Um, at the Forest Park Visitor Center on Monday of next week. And then we have two um more general open houses for the whole draft plan scheduled for June. Um, at the Piper Palm House in Tower Grove Park and at Tandy Recreation Center um on June fourteenth on the weekend. Um, additionally, we are doing meetings all the time. Um, Monday, we met with the Community Advisory Committee. Last night, we met with um Plan Area Three. Uh, part of the neighborhood planning process and gave them an update tomorrow. Project team will meet with the Universal Design Group, um which is a particular focus on. Accessibility and disability issues um within the plan. Um, we will be out on Friday at Bike to Work Day. Staffing some of the commuter stations to um increase knowledge about the plan and make sure people know about the Monday event. Um, so there's a lot coming up. Uh, there's a lot of work left to do, but we're we're fully into developing. Um, you know, writing all the chapters and into the nitty gritty of developing the the full plan. So I can stop there and of course, happy to um attempt to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Scott. Appreciate the uh presentation as always. Um, I think just for fun, I'm gonna go opposite order uh this time around. So we'll start with Commissioner Williams. Any questions?
Well, you know, I like to go last so that everyone else can already ask the question. So. Thanks for messing up my strategy. Uh, yeah, I I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to express my appreciation for. Uh, the way you are doing the plan. Uh, I think everything looks great. I did want to note though that uh Fordville does have a Juneteenth community bike ride the same day as your block party. And we started in at Tandy Rexling, so hopefully we can make it a.
What time?
One big party, but we start at eight A M and we get back at noon eh at noon.
Well, you're right. You're going to be right on time to participate in the open house. So this is this is.
With a bunch of folks on bikes, so how fitting.
I love it.
Alright, cool. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller.
Um, just one question. Um, you might have mentioned it about the coordination with the neighborhood plans. Um, Scott, how is um that detailed coordination happening?
Yeah, so we we've been engaging with the um planning areas that are underway right now. In the planning process. Um, some of that has been. Direct with the consultant teams, so they who who are working in each of those neighborhood planning areas. So they understand the scope of the plan and some some details of the plan. Um, and then some of it has been with the neighborhood planning committees um in those in those planning areas. Um, so we've done both of those things. I I do think it's um important to note that this is really a s- a citywide plan. It's really a lot of kind of big picture topics. Um, of course, the city does not have and has not had a citywide transportation plan for many decades. Um, so we need to get um. The goals for the city are really important elements of this. This plan, it does get in um. To some extent into individual project priorities for the future, especially safety related projects. You know, through the safety action plan and the high injury network. However, there is still lots of space within those neighborhood planning areas within that initiative. To provide really sort of local priorities um. And local desires within each neighborhood planning area. That this plan at the citywide scale doesn't really have the capacity to get into all the time. Um, I think when this plan is complete. It'll be a big benefit for the neighborhood um. Planning efforts to start with this as a foundation and then be able to kind of refine it to suit. The the goals of each um neighborhood planning initiative.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Jorgensen.
Uh, thank you. I don't have any questions, but I would just note, as I as I may have mentioned before, I'm originally from the fancy bike family Denmark. And um. You know, we have a lot of good bike and and uh pedestrian infrastructure there. And that's not something that just happened, uh but it makes for amazing cities like Copenhagen, as I've talked about before. Uh, that's that that's a choice that was made uh decades ago to invest in that kind of infrastructure. Um, and it's resulted in some great cities. Uh, with happier citizens, uh people who can move around more easily for job, school, everything. People feel safer in the streets. And I'm just very, very thrilled that uh City St. Louis is uh working on this plan and taking steps in a very positive direction. Uh, to be more like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubman.
Uh, yeah, I think this is really good work. I really appreciate it. Um. I uh, I don't know if this will be of any use to you, but. Um, we had worked with MoDOT. We wrapped up last year that arterial's blueprint. Um, they're about to kick off the second phase of that, which is getting very detail oriented. One of the main items. Is kind of identifying the kind of the ongoing maintenance commitments and costs. Of various types of roadway facilities um and modal facilities. Uh, it's amazingly, very little of that information exists. We've we've been finding. I know that G R G does a jo-. Does that fairly well with their greenways, but that's only one type of facility for one mode or. Active, active transit modes, but uh maybe. If you're interested to follow along with that, it might be a helpful tool. Be some overlap with what you're trying to achieve with your ongoing maintenance. Identifying your ongoing maintenance commitments and and uh financial, you know, costs. Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. Um, I think we're really looking forward to having that information developed. Um, the the T M P will make some kind of high level order of magnitude estimates about what is needed to. You know, maintain the existing system we have and to improve the system in ways that are identified in the plan. Um, you know, as as you know. And we've, we've built out, the city transporti- transportation system exists tremendous investment in the past. Um, you know, tremendous municipal civic investment and, you know, federal funding went into building the system we have. Um, but. It's always wearing out and it requires a continual reinvestment um to shape it in the ways that, you know. People would like to see it shaped now um to meet today's needs and just to keep it in a state of good repair and functionality. And I think an important thing the T M P will begin to do and, you know, the. Project you mentioned, the the blueprint, can maybe do in a little more refined way is help us really understand exactly. What um the needs are long term and to over time, you know. Plan to meet those needs with appropriate budgets. Yeah, they're looking at it also to help upfront planning and design decisions. Um, because they had never actually quantified the ongoing costs of maintaining a lane of arterial roadway. Per se, much less additional facilities, which we're now asking them to to build and maintain. So. Yeah, I think it'll have some upfront benefit as well.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Garmendia.
Yes, hi. Thanks so much for this. Um, I, my question is about. Well, whether the T M P will have any recommendations around. Um, piloting street redesigns. So I guess like the. Low cost temporary kind of pro- uh piloting of of. Uh, more permanent street redesigns using things like paints, cones, planners. Is that going to be ta- is that talked about at all in the T M P and our current policy and and and. What that would look like with an adopted T M P?
I think it will, it'll be touched on um in in the policy and ordinance section. Um, some recommendations there. And I think the street design framework will also touch on it a little bit. Um, it is, it is something the city has done a little bit of um over the last decade or so. And I think, you know, in some corridors can have uh like a meaningful benefit. Can also be really challenging on higher volume streets, um you know, to do something that is temporary, but is. Safe and also holds up sufficiently um for like a trial period. But yeah, there'll there'll be some, I think some suggestions on. How we can continue and maybe expand a little bit what we've done so far.
That's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you, uh Commissioner Fowler.
Um, first Scott, thanks for the presentation. Um, have having a little bit of deja vu here, but um I think it's I saw it on Monday. Um, but uh, thank you for the presentation. I have three, three quick comments. Um. You know, we talk about here in the city um losing population. I think this plan is a great piece to combat that. Um, we talk about safety connectivity and O N M and it's a lot of things that, you know, um need a little bit of um help. Or um progress there. So um, and it definitely drives people to make decisions on where they live. Um, you know, being able to get to where you want to go without a car or feeling safe in your own neighborhood. Um, safety for your children. So um, a lot of these themes all come together to kind of drive that home. Um, putting these plans together um really shows that. Um, a lot of hard work from the team there also, um as being part of that and going to those meetings. So um, thanks for that. That's just a comment. To um, and maybe um Commissioner Bradley can help on this one. I know we have a can, the city has a consultant that is doing the ADA transition plan. And I'm assuming they're doing some type of data collection. Um, and maybe you guys can talk about this afterwards, but. I would assume that's also information that we can have and that will help answer some of the questions about how much sidewalk we have in the city. I know it's an ongoing process, but I'm assuming that would be like G I S based or something like that. And we'd be able to share that information, you know. Throughout the different agencies or um departments. Um, is that something you guys can talk about?
Yeah, I I could speak to that. Um, so the ADA transition plan was adopted about two years ago and. As you mentioned, part of it was. Um, a very thorough G I S assessment of um a portion of the city's sidewalk network. So we have extremely thorough data on. I don't know the exact figure, but maybe, you know, roughly ten percent of the city's sidewalk network. It would be, w- we do need to get, I I would say adequate data on kind of the full sidewalk network, but potentially not to the level of detail that is. In the existing ADA ADA transition plan. Um, but that data, you know, it was also combined with information related to sidewalk demand driven by. Population data and community drivers, you know, schools, libraries, parks, et cetera. To create a a sidewalk prioritization for standalone ADA projects. So every time the city is doing, you know, a major capital project, we are. Bringing the the level of accessibility up to meet the ADA standard. But a lot of times that is, it's just one project component. And so what the ADA's transition plan as it relates to sidewalks is doing is saying there are. Standalone sidewalk projects essentially that should be done even independent of um other roadway projects. And so. City has has started to do that with um media transition budget. I also want to mention though that the ADA transition plan, it's not just about sidewalks and transportation. It's also about access to public facilities and public buildings. Um, accessibility within those buildings, access to services and programs that are accessible. So the, and there has been dedicated funding for the last couple of years in city budgets, but it hasn't all gone into. Sidewalk work. A lot of it has gone into buildings and programs as well.
Yeah, I was just thinking hopefully there is something that we can grab from that and we don't have to go get, you know, go double dip and get the data twice. Um, maybe not.
Yeah, we've, I think we've, we've, so I want to emphasize we are using it, like we are using the ADA transition plan, but. We've probably learned maybe like the the correct level of um data collection we need by by doing that first round.
Cool. And then my last thing, um, you know, we went through this with the sloop. Is there. Going to be, I guess my recommendation is that we have a standalone meeting once we get like a draft. Um, that and we can all just have that in our mind to have a meeting on the side or outside of this meeting to go through. Not page by page, but come with questions. That way we can kind of um. Kurt tail or speed up that process. Um, and we don't, you know, sit in this meeting and have that long drawn out conversation. So if you can do that, Miriam and 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 Scott, that would be great. Just my recommendation.
Absolutely. We are um anticipating doing that. Um, can't quite schedule it yet because, you know, we don't have the full draft plan available um to distribute to commissioners. Um, and I don't want to put an exact date. I mean, we will have that plan because um, you know. There's still a lot of work to go into it, but um we are happy to do that and anticipate doing it and uh look forward to it.
Alright, thanks.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Bradley.
So Scott gave an outstanding answer to your question, Commissioner Fowler, on the ADA transition plan and. Obviously, we have a long way to go with that. There is dedicated funding. Um, just like other things in the city, but the capital needs uh of the city outweigh the funding. So. We're working very, very hard on that and um, but it's it's a multi-phase process and. That ADA transition plan, I will just say this. Um, started conversations way back in about two thousand and ten. About getting a plan in place and David Newberger, I'm sure Commissioner on a disabled has started it way before then. And so it was a major accomplishment to get this done to the point where we are today, but. That does not mean we are complete with the plan or the implementation. So we have quite a bit to go. So um. I hope that answer, but yes, there should be good data there. We should be able to share all that data. And not have to recreate it. Um, I don't have any questions. I've been involved with this um. Through the beginning of it, but what I do want to do here is take an opportunity to. Give Scott Ogilvy um a shout out. He has been an outstanding. Project manager for this project. He's been on top of it. He lives, breathes, sleeps, eats it. Um, and he's just outstanding in his efforts and, you know, I definitely want to say thank you from myself. And I think we owe owe him some gratitude for the amount of dedication that he has put into this work. So, thank you, Scott.
Very kind words, Commissioner. Um, appreciate, thank you.
What does it taste like?
I I was gonna make a joke. He said I've been sleeping it, but I but I was gonna say it's starting to keep me up at night a little bit, actually. So.
Thank you. Um, Alder Woman Clark Hubbard.
Thank you. I don't have any additional questions. Just again, excited about being able to help with the implementation addition as well. I. I will note and I'm sure Alder Woman Switzer noted as well that a lot of the things that were mentioned um in this update. Were in complete alignment with the priorities that we had um talked about today in the Public Infrastructure Utilities Committee. So. Um, I'm excited about the fact that we are going to make sure that we. Reduce the barriers, right? We don't want to cause more problems. Trying to solve a problem. And then um, of course, I'm always excited about accessibility. Um, so thank you, I I echo the um shout out to you. Shout out to you, Scott, um, for all the work that you've done and, and I look forward to being able to be here to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Woman Schweitzer.
Uh, thank you. I echo all the thanks for the presentation and all the work. I've attended many of the. Open houses and spoken with the team and, and learned a lot from, from that. Uh, you know, one of the questions I have right off the bat is we talk about the funding of these projects and having. Different times that we allocate funding, whether it's, you know, designated, designated funding in the budget for things like paving. Um, or you know, how ward capital pays for these arterials. You know, sometimes it feels like rearranging deck chairs in the Titanic. We talk about the funding that we currently have available for streets in general in the city, no matter if it's. Changing St. Louis Works, changing Ward Capital, finding money in the budget, you know, our capital money, it's just not enough. Are you anticipating, you know, a, a separate bond issue being recommended or um? An additional tax? I mean, where, where do we get this? Because it's, it's going to be really expensive.
Yeah, there, there are going to be some recommendations in the plan, um, in the policy section. Um, that. Our recommendations, need to emphasize that. I do think it is, um, it's safe to say. That, you know, if you average over the last twenty years, let's say, um. We haven't really been spending enough uh to maintain the system and improve it, I think, the way we would like to. So the overall investment needs to increase. I would simultaneously say that. That really hasn't been the case the last couple of years. There's, there's been a lot of investment going into the system. And we're seeing a lot of construction activity, especially this year. Um, so in a lot of ways, I think this is a good time to start, you know, talking about what the. Sustainable level of investment and projects are, you know, with. You know, for instance, the upper repaving corridors, um, you know, staff has been working on. Basically six corridors simultaneously. That's too many. Um, you know, we, we don't need to do six a year if we were doing. You know, one to two arterials consistently every year. That would be kind of a sustainable cycle. Um, but the fact that we are getting so much done right now, I think means. We can see a path towards continuing. That type of investment, but maybe not on as many streets each year.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the, the influx of federal funding is. Not something that we can count on in the next four years, um, or three and a. Three years minus a hundred days or whatever it is. No one's counting. Um, but you know, I think the uh, um. I, I've just been concerned with the information coming out of the federal government uh regarding their transportation policies and. Pushing back on things like road diets and things like that and how funding will look for us uh going forward. Um, so I'd be very interested in this plan showing us. Some sort of number of what we need yearly to meet the kind of basics of what you're saying, whether it is one to two arterials a year. Um, how far are we from that number? Where do we anticipate those holes being filled? And, you know, what, what's our plan to get there? Um, you know, I think there are a lot of aldermen who are interested in having less control over which streets get paved in their ward and when. Um, but to do that, we need to see a paving plan and know that. Streets in our ward are going to get paved. That's hugely important to my constituents and that's something we really need to see. Um. One of the policies you mentioned in particular, I think it was like the fourth item of the maintenance uh section was around the uh utility work. I'm wondering if the policies that you all be recommending and reviewing are based on the new utility bill that just went into effect in January or the old policies?
The, yeah, so there, there's an exist, a recent update that I think um. You know, we, we recently reviewed that in the course of the plan and kind of did a close reading of it to see. Just to think about its applicability um and how the other elements of the plan interact with it. So. You know, I think in general, just to kind of stay on this topic of, you know, arterial sort of programmatic arterial investment. Um, once we get on that cycle and we can kind of accurately project. You know, let's say five years out, what streets will be touched? That makes it a lot easier um to interact with the major utility providers. Um, you know, they have work plans that are generally speaking. You know, projected out several years that they're not making on the fly decisions most of the time. So they need a long. Lead time to be able to effectively cater their work plans to, you know, city projects. That said, there are. There are inevitably going to be a lot of emergency repairs and a lot of development related utility activity that. Is going to require excavations and the, the repair of those um. Utility cuts is, is something that I think we have the. You know, I think we're gonna, we're gonna develop, I think. More proactive standards for whoever is doing that work um to make sure that um the restoration work is up to spec essentially.
Yeah, because the new bill does cover a lot of what you just said.
Yeah, but I think it's.
Standards and so I'm interested in just seeing, you know, what. Suggestions are made or what changes still need to, to happen there. Uh, you know, we're really, the streets department is really in the kind of beginning of the implementation phase of. The new utility policy and um. You know, I'd hate to get a plan several months down the line being like, hey, we knew all these things should be changed months ago, but we didn't say anything. So, you know, please say something. Uh, you know, I have asked for feedback a lot on that bill, so I hope that we get um information uh sooner rather than later as we move forward. On that.
Yeah, I, I think the plan just wants to reinforce this as an important topic, kind of elevate it as an important topic, something that. Um, did come up, you know, very often through public engagement, you know, resident concerns on this topic. And the, the plan is not necessarily going to. Get into every technical detail of how you do street restoration. That's not really the role of the plan. But the plan is to, the role of the plan is to provide like a robust foundation for why that matters. And I know the detailed work is kind of happening um in parallel based on the ordinance that already passed.
Uh, well, I really look forward to seeing more drafts and I would love to schedule a time to meet with the uh, the team individually. I think that's a great idea that you had during the presentation to, to have that option available to us. Um, and I agree with Commissioner Fowler that we're all going to have tons of questions uh as we see it. So. I appreciate that and I will be at the bike workshop on Monday night. Looking forward to it. Thanks for all you're doing.
So, me too. See you there.
Great, thank you. Um, just a few last questions for me, uh, not to harp on this too much, but um. We did just, there's a new Ameren substation going in on the west end and they're digging up the streets. And so. We were told during that neighborhood meeting that um due to the new utility legislation that utilities now have to pay the city to repave. Repave the street. So is that, is that the case? Is that not the case? I'm just curious.
I don't think I'm the best one to ask that or to address that question because I'm not really. In the project flow of individual utility work. Um. We could maybe come back with some information for you on that from appropriate staff.
Okay. Also, one question in general, um. Say we get a paving plan in place, which would be amazing. Is there a plan to say make a website where the public can access and see? Oh, this street was recently repaved, you know, two years ago, or this street is scheduled to be repaved in three years. Um. How is that? How is the public going to be able to interact with that data?
Yeah, for sure. Um, so part of the plan is, is, you know, development of online maps to communicate information to the public on, on these topics. Um, I do also want to say that in the last year or so, the. City has put a lot of additional information up online um through the Board of Public Service website. There's now. Many even ward capital projects have project pages and are mapped. Um, so we're kind of already getting into the mode of, of sharing. Paving is something that's not completely mapped right now, um, but I think we, we can certainly move towards. Um, mapping that in the future and the, the, the T N P should really provide, well, is going to provide. Kind of the format to do that going forward.
Okay. All right, um, I'm gonna throw this, this grenade into the chat. So previously under when we've discussed transportation mobility plan transit has been. A big topic um and part of the plan and. With the recent potential changes to green line, which before was a big part of, of the plan and with the. With the new uh administration, I'm curious on how is that affecting the plan? Um, is that? Still in the plan? Are we making changes to that? Or how are you all dealing with that?
I think it, it slightly remains to be seen exactly how we will refer to it, but. The assumption is still completely there that there's, the, the city is pursuing. Some form of high quality transit service in the Jefferson Parnell Corridor. There, you know. By state and the city are still proceeding with green line project work at the moment. Um, to kind of complete the current phase of design and engineering. Um, obviously, you know, it's, it's in the news that people are looking for the best way forward. Um, and so, you know, the plan will, I think, reflect the. The state of the knowledge um at, at the time that the plan goes into effect. And these plans are not. Set in stone. They don't have to be static forever. So if things change in the future, um, the plan can be updated to reflect that. You know, the, the. North side, south side, of course, has evolved um quite a bit over the years already, um, and potentially could evolve some more.
All right, great. And with that, I think we'll wrap it up.
Come back to Don.
And we'll come back to Don, of course.
Right, so, yes, there's fresh thinking going on, uh, as Scott was mentioning about the, the. The green line and the status of that. Uh, one of the things that just, Scott, I want to add. To your comments here, just to make mention of the committee that you now chair. Uh, and that you had the final meeting of it just recently. And as a result of that, um. One, uh, you produced, produced a final report for that, and that document is produced in-house without consultants. Uh, want you to mention that. I think also, uh. We should send that uh link. You can make mention as to where the link is on the website of that report, but Scott, if you would send the link to that plan, that document. Uh, after you mention it, uh, to all the planning commission members, I'd appreciate that. And just to include the son of our big happy family here at P D A. If Scott was to raise his hand, uh, Miriam could see him and uh Alicia could see him. Uh, we're all close together and knit here, but Scott, just tell briefly about the, about the uh committee you chair and the final report.
Sure, um, and, and so what Don's referring to is the Complete Streets Advisory Committee. Um, and that Complete Streets ordinance was updated um in the course of the plan, kind of as a. A parallel project, uh, a little bit to the plan. Of course, Alder Woman Schweitzer was. Please remind me if you, you were the primary sponsor when she, Alder, Alder, yes. Um, so acknowledged that uh her um lead. On that, but um interface with the T N P uh planning team. And um, one of the elements of the new complete streets plan is the production each year of a. Um, what we kind of called this year, the, the complete streets report, which covered a lot of city transportation investment and policy activities through calendar year twenty twenty four. But the way that the ordinance is written, that report. One of the things the report does is kind of an annual update on the implementation of the transportation mobility plan. So in the future, after the plan is, is adopted, um, that plant, that, that report. Will, you know, show progress towards implementation and it'll continue to be. Kind of a compendium of important transportation investments that the city makes each year. Along with, you know, maps and facts and figures and, you know, in the future. Um, safety information and those types of elements. So we put the first report out. A few weeks ago and I'll be happy to share that to the whole planning commission. Come on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, I will pass it back to Miriam to talk about other planning initiatives.
And I'll be brief. Um, so. At every planning commission meeting, tried to provide commissioners uh an update on kind of other things that maybe. Don't merit their kind of own full presentations, but other things to be aware of that are in the works. Here is sort of in a snapshot, all the things going on in citywide and general planning, neighborhood planning, and then other work at P D A and in partnership with other departments. Heard about a couple of these things tonight in detail. Next slide. Um, I just wanted to share with you some of the um. Sort of upcoming work to happen with the zoning overhaul now that we're referring to as the City of St. Louis zoning upgrade. So this timeline shows the first major phase of work and gives you a sense of what to expect in terms of. Deliverables and progress along the way. So in June, we'll be kicking off the project um officially with a public event. I'll talk about more, about that more in a second. In late summer, early fall, will be um a major diagnostic report. This is kind of the. Foundation for the rest of the process, which is, you know, how is our code currently falling short and how do we need to adjust it in this upgrade? To better achieve our goals and better align with best practices. Then from there, September through March are the development of different. Modules that will then become the new zoning code. Um, including also processes and procedures related to administration of zoning. And then um, this is an aggressive uh goal, but by June of next year, we would have a full. Draft of the new zoning code for public review. Um, so here's, yeah, a little bit about what to expect of the coming year or more. Next slide. I mentioned that we're now terming this the City of St. Louis zoning upgrade. So you're going to start to see the term um Z O U P, which. There was extensive internal discussion about how to arrive at the best name for the initiative, but zoning upgrade. And then uh the acronym having a little bit of continuity from the sloop process, which. Of course, will continue to serve as the sort of substantive foundation for what we're trying to achieve through land use regulation. Next slide. And this kickoff um is, we, we really want to set a sort of. Aspirational, but also sort of grounded tone for this process. And we will be doing that a number of ways. Um, but uh, next slide. The main first event is a public panel discussion on zoning and the process where. We'll actually have a few um experts on zoning who have led, successfully led. Other cities through this work, which is a significant undertaking. Um, I can talk about the ins and outs of that. Um, you know, that, yes, it is possible and the benefits that other cities have. Um, experience from that and we're lucky for this panel to be moderated by Dara Escruch, the CEO of Invest STL locally. A planner, for those of you who don't know, and knows both. Uh, zoning really, and also the um importance of really long-term reinvestment in our community. And the importance of doing so in an equitable way. So I think it should be a really good discussion. June eleventh at uh five forty-five, we'll kind of open the doors. There will be some informal activities and things like that. And this will be at the Forest Park Visitor Center. Uh, next slide. Um, and this will be really just the beginning. We'll have a lot of kind of alongside the technical work and deliverables I described earlier, a lot of engagement. And communication around this process and um something that we're going to be announcing and kind of opening up in the next couple of days is. Sort of our recruitment, I suppose, is the term for an advisory committee, very similar to the Strategic Land Use Plan Steering Committee. That will be um sort of. The little bit of internal um voice of community um experts and residents, some of whom have interacted with the zoning code, others not. Um, to make sure that we're doing this um, this whole process in a way that. Is, is right for St. Louis. So we'll be opening up applications for that advisory committee in the coming days. And then throughout the process, we'll also form topical working groups, more of technical experts and so on. And uh, we'll be communicating a lot about this. Um, with the public and also working with departments, of course, and elected officials, kind of the whole way through. with the public and also working with departments, of course, and elected officials, kind of the whole way through. Really trying to use the same engagement approach or very similar engagement approach as we did with the Strategic Land Use Plan Process. Next slide. So yeah, that's all I had about the zoning upgrade. Lot more to come on that, but just wanted to make sure commissioners knew a little bit of what to expect in the coming month or so, as we start to launch that process.
Alrighty. Any quick general questions for Miriam?
Miriam, I had one. I've had a lot of interaction on the zoning code in the last few years. And one of the issues, and we're in that process right now, where we have a new land use plan and our zoning code is pretty outdated. And we had a meeting before the Board of Adjustment about a convenience store. And the staff Evan was at the meeting and he said, well, according to the land use plan, this use is allowable. I just think we gotta get a little better, more discreet, a little bit more definitive. While it is, some things are allowable. Hopefully in the zoning code and through this zoning process, we we can just be a little bit more discerning. One of the things we're having, we're trying to keep our schnucks in North City. And we have ten convenience stores. This was a new convenience store. There was several blocks. So we've got to, you know, help the Board of Adjustment. They seem to be on a different path. So I like the audit part that you mentioned before, the co diagnostics. We need to do that. So I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, and I'll just share. Actually, I happened to listen to part of that Board of Adjustment meeting. That's part of something we're doing as a staff is more regularly listening to those discussions to understand really just kind of on the ground situations where our code and really kind of zoning approvals process generally is mismatched to where we could be. This interim period is a super tricky process to manage. And the SLOOP, I think that's a great example, the convenience store where the SLOOP, it's a high level of guidance. What we really need are zoning regulations that are offered the level of detail to deal with a really complicated use like a convenience store. So that I just fully take and appreciate your point and think that managing this interim period and kind of working with the Board of Adjustment will be a really important part of this process. But both to understand kind of the the issues that really regularly come before the Board of Adjustment and how they're considered and but also to sort of start the process early of educating them about once we have a new zoning code, that it will be a little bit of an opportunity for a reset in terms of how we do zoning approvals, hopefully where we won't be as reliant on in some cases or kind of habitually using variances as an outlet for development, good and and problematic, in my opinion.
Yeah, I totally agree. I appreciate that you were there for that. And yeah, that's the heart of what we need to get at. If we want to keep residents on our city, we've got to be a little bit better job on that. So, thank you.
Great. Any other questions for Miriam?
And this is Don. Bye, Murren. Yeah, if anybody else queued up to doing any other reports on planning initiatives?
Jonathan's going to provide a, if he's still on, I think he is, a quick update on neighborhood planning progress.
Oh, and so I'm going to say this in advance. So you now know the three locations for Miriam and Alicia and Scott. Jonathan actually sets, if we were looking from this bird's eye view, the epicenter between the three other staffers, so. And here it comes with the report on neighborhood planning.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Chair. And I am Jonathan Roper, City Planning Executive, the Planning and Urban Design Agency. So for neighborhood planning update this evening, we have the screen. We'll go through the all the planning areas, starting with Planning Area One. Just some quick recaps of just to note through all the planning areas, we still are doing just visioning, engagement and still meeting. So just giving some of the highlights. Plan Area One Spring Workshop happened last month. Pretty unfortunately hit on a, what is it called? Earth Day, so a lot of people were out and about, but we definitely have a lot of good feedback from that meeting. It was very nicely put on by the consultants. Also, there is Dream Boulevard. Before I was mentioning the Martin Luther King Culture Corridor, led by also your Commissioner Aaron Williams. They transformed a, the vacant office of the former Alderman Sam Moore into Dream Boulevard. It's basically a museum of just all the awesome activity that has happened in the VIL. So please stop by at the Southeast Corner of Whittier and Dr. Martin Luther King. The Planning Area Two, we recently had a traffic calming pop-up just outside the Walnut Park Library. And also we had another pop-up at the Carter Park Light, Carter Park. And actually, at the bottom there at the screen, you could see some of the art that was made for the community or with the community. And also with Plan Area Two, they are looking at just to share some fun highlights. With the community, different you could see on the, where it says option three on the right side, just different logos for the neighborhood to just give that really strong branding. Plan Area Three, recently connected a bus tour of the area. So that was just great to have community and city staff there with us. We also have Project Connect on note, which we'll hear more. The plans are still getting drafted there. And in the next couple of months or so, we will come back to the planning commission with an update. And finally, we have Plan Areas Four, Five and Six. While they're not on the screen right now, we are contracting with those neighborhoods there, which will, you're about eleven neighborhoods in total. So we hopefully should be finished contracting for the planning areas. And then as we move on to starting planning for Planning Areas Four, Five and Six, we are also looking for a new staff member planner. So if you know anyone, you know, please tell them to go to the city and look for the Community Planner Three, because we do need assistance in doing all this wonderful planning. And with that, I'll entertain any questions or comments that the Commission may have.
Great. Thanks, Jonathan. Any questions?
Jonathan, I have a question. You and I had a good conversation at the VIL meeting at New Stand Missionary a few weeks ago. And and I got a couple of things I wanted to say about that to the Commissioners and to share that. So they were doing the neighborhood plan for the VIL and the Kingsway East neighborhoods. And the consultant from Oh, Joan. Lamar John, yeah. They did a very good job talking about all the traditional elements. But one of the things that struck me, and Jonathan and I had a conversation about it, so he might have some thoughts on it since we met, is that the VIL area, and many of you know, is vastly depopulated. We have a lot of vacant ground. And Alicia was making her presentation, and I pushed Jonathan on. Are we really looking at the grid and maintaining the street grid as it is? On a lot of these vacant blocks. Not saying that I don't have the solution. But are we looking at that in terms of open space? Are we visualizing that this neighborhood is going to be reconstructed? And we're going to maintain the grid just like it is when nobody live in there for the next fifteen years? Or are we, is this the time to look at that? And should that be a part of the neighborhood plan? The other part of that discussion was about prioritizing the residential areas. You know, in the plan, they were marked residential. Well, it's one thing to have a residential with neighborhood, a block with two houses. And the other block has forty houses. Are we prioritizing our public investment or sidewalk plan in the neighborhood? Or we, are we doing prioritization in the neighborhood plan? Seems to me that's where we should be doing it. So those kind of two things there that Jonathan and I talked about that should be addressed. I mean, we're losing residents in these areas. Middle-class people are leaving. Well, if they're on a block that there's two houses and they love their house, but what are we, are we making it so that they can stay there? Or are we just just doing business as usual and keep doing it that way? And it doesn't seem to be working. So that's my comment. Question.
And you know, I appreciate, and that's one of the exciting comments that I did, you know, conversations that we did have that we got new ideas for. So with this on kind of to address, one, the residential kind of not to lose residents. One of the items that we did switch up was to make a block-by-block vacancy kind of criteria. So looking at the blocks, which blocks have, let's just say, few vacancies versus many? Where are they located? So for example, if you are coming outside of a park, or if you're, you and your kid are coming outside of a school, vacancy next to that school, you know, that will drive out a lot of people. So looking at those items that will definitely say, hey, I can go over to St. Charles, or I can go here where that's not an issue. So, you know, people do choose or send their kids to school. What's immediately around there? And also, how are they navigating? So looking at those streets, because if one person's going to, you know, that one school, there's a hundred other people driving up that same road. So looking at areas that are have more heavily traveled, because they are pretty visible. And that goes to respect and pride of taking your kid to school or other people too. So there is that. There's also the areas that just outside of just being next to a school or a park, there's just areas that might have one vacant house or two, that over time it gets worse and worse. And people are like, is it time to move? You know, it became less and less safe of a property. So how can we actually target if it's, you know, not LRA? If it's privately owned, what are different strategies and solutions to say, how could we actually just increase the probability of this getting redeveloped? Is it from more marketing of it? And our marketing, is it code enforcement for that one property? So versus code enforcement on, you know, a block with fifty vacant properties, that code enforcement looks a little, you know, the effectiveness is a little different. So we want to look at the differences between those and just a number of other solutions. So now we're excited to look at what we're going to, how we're going to respond to that. And we still are looking at that. As far as the other, this comment has also come up where there is a need for, we talk about having grocery stores. You mentioned the Schnucks Market, which is now one of the only, you know, grocery stores outside of the old, the old grand standing at this point. So looking at, we had a lot of different solutions for urban agriculture and also just support of the food system. So not to compete with Schnucks, but hopefully to well, I say healthy competition, meaning you get a lot more healthier foods from these smaller bodegas and stuff. Then Schnucks says, oh, okay, you know, people are into this. Now I can offer edamame with arugula and romaine versus just offering romaine lettuce, because the market's not there. So we want to look for ways to both expand what we're doing. Both, I mentioned the the healthy foods and the Schnucks, because in urban agriculture, a lot of people are saying, could we take two vacant blocks and use the street as well? The street is a lot of prime real estate, if you would. You know, the blocks are just as big as the street. So people are saying, hey, how can we actually use this grid to our advantage? And what does that infrastructure that's needed look like if you're doing more urban agriculture or more outdoor active or passive green space? What is the service level look like that might look different than having, how how we do it today? But just in the future, we will have more.
Don, you have any comment? Is that appropriate for the neighborhood plan, that type of discussion?
Yes, the grid system, yes. Generally speaking, when we talk about especially like vacations of streets and alleys, those are decisions that do come to the planning commission. So in these neighborhood plans, SLOOP and the Transportation Mobility Plan, we would want to have these items. So if someone ever came in and said, I wanted to do this, this or that, and close off the street grid, we would want to have that foresight to say, oh, yeah, that's a great idea, because, you know, if you want to close off the street, it's like, for what reason? You know, you, and you see a lot of times some closures that don't make sense. But so, yeah, we want to look at what does make sense. And but also the feasibility of if you did try to re-grid it, there's also, I think it came up earlier, asked to, how do you pay for things like that? So there's that reality too.
Thank you.
Commissioner, one of the things I'll add is, yeah. In our neighborhoods, we have to be so conscious of keeping amenities that people need, want, and as part of their quality of life. And help make sure those don't slip away. The other part is there is something that we can do as a Juna move to make new amenities, additional amenities. And the vacancy collaborative looks on things like the vacant property as to whether that could be some urban agriculture and become something that's an amenity. We have to think of those types of things in the in the neighborhood planning as we look at these. One of the things is way back, it's now about twenty years ago, the St. Louis Place Neighborhood was working on a neighborhood plan. And it, at the time, we could tell had the largest concentration of vacancy as anywhere else in the city. Meaning it was places where entire blocks were completely vacant, and you could look across those sea of of vacancy. In that neighborhood planning process, certainly they looked at infill for areas along St. Louis Avenue place. But the punchline is that large area became as part of the neighborhood planning, some planning. Let's reserve this for something big and see how we can use the other spaces to keep the amenities and keep the fabric. Twenty years ago, the something big is now occurring. That's where NGA is. And so we have to have to really be thinking about keeping people in their neighborhoods and the neighborhood amenities. And what are the moves that we can do to enhance both what's there now and the future? And it might be a big picture change or maybe incremental things. So that's just my smile about the St. Louis Place Neighborhoods ended up, got a little traumatized because the NGA ended up being much bigger, but not by much than the area identified for something big. And there was relocation, but the NGA is there coming there. So that's just a point I'll make.
Commissioner Kramindia.
Thank you. I just, I'm glad Don mentioned it. I was going to bring it up if he didn't, the Vacancy Strategy Initiative. And I do think that's something I would be, it's critical to see, you know, as they wrap up their two-year initiative with, and I think it would be really a great opportunity to further that in the neighborhood planning process. So I'm definitely looking forward to seeing that collaboration or continuation. Just because I I think Commissioner Miller is absolutely spot on, like the neighborhood planning is an opportunity to have those hard conversations and have the vacancy strategy be informed by and the neighborhood planning, you know, be informed by what residents would like to see happen and you know, making those hard decisions, because that's, I think, something that'll, that came up in the exercises that I think Alderwoman Clark Hubbard attended as well, their last convening, quarterly convening. We went through some exercises on how limited city resources are for addressing vacancy and if we just took a sample block, how many resources we could throw at a block and and how really that wouldn't be realistic for us to do across the city, even if we were able to arrange for all of it. And so that's, and just how limited the Um, even if we were able to arrange for all of it, and so that's, and just how limited the funding is there. So I think. Um, I'm I'm really um hopeful that the neighborhood planning can. Bring that um process forward as well.
And I'll just, you know, uh, you know, Jack, one more thing as it reflects on. A a number of emerging issues that were several years ago. Uh, about vacancy, both from the Center for Community Progress, um. Our uh. Own people here with the Department of Conservation, and what's coming to mind is the work of Sunny Whiteside also uh at that time, who is since passed, but uh. Good comments. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Karm India for that, well. Because I can see strategy too.
Jack, I think the floor is yours now.
See a couple more hands. Uh, Alderwoman Spicer.
Thank you so much. This is really interesting. I'm really getting to know the neighborhood planning process. Uh. Uh, Miriam Keller was kind enough to walk through it with me a little bit, and I'm really interested in this. Uh, you know, I wonder, one of the the cities I've been to recently that has been struggling with a lot of these, how do we plan for areas where there's two houses on a block? And get city resources there and what happens is Detroit, and I went there recently and learned a lot more about how they're doing it. Um, are we taking in resources from cities that are dealing with such similar issues and and bringing the, you know, having those thought leaders participate in our discussions around this?
Yeah, so two items, the way we. Do it right now. The strategy that we made, including some of the, even today, some of the decisions that we make, we do connect with other cities. I'll note Detroit has been connected with in the past, but probably not as recent as we would hope. Some others might include. Uh, Denver, Philadelphia, Chicago and Toronto for a number of items, just to learn, so we do pick up and have conversations. Uh, regarding. The uh. I'm sorry, I mean, lapse up, what was my second point on that? Uh, but regarding Detroit, yeah, so we can. I think that's definitely a place that has a similar, definitely, as we know, a similar um. Vacancy. Issues, so we could definitely reach out to Detroit and just have them look at this, but um I would say our consultants that we do bring on board. Uh, two of the three are not, well, all three of them do work around the country. And but two of the three are not local. Well. One has an office in Chicago and St. Louis, but the other was from New York, so we do have different firms that do have expertise that they do, they do bring um from other cities too.
So a couple of things I'll add to that. It was a long, long time ago, but I went to graduate school and planning at the University of Michigan, so. So the city of Detroit was our, you know, our lab. Um. The uh. Planning Director of Detroit, uh, who had been the planning director for about three, three and a half years. Is a friend of mine. He's now left and gone to an architectural firm. But at one of my meetings with him. Uh, with other planners, he made note that last calendar year, Detroit only had thirty-four. New single-family home starts in a much larger geography than ours. Uh, so there are lessons that we can learn from Detroit. Uh, and one of the lead consultants uh in the transit and memorial and mobility study. Used to be the deputy director of uh planning in Detroit, so uh. Yeah, we're also wanting to have, when we select consulting teams, a chance to pick their brains about what they've done in other communities, so. Uh, Jonathan's right, we're not just trying to solve our own problems by our own knowledge, but looking at other places. And that planning director and I was on a panel recently at the National Planning Conference about some characteristics of our city, so, yep.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's really interesting. When I was there, as you know, they have twice as big of a population as we do, but also twice as much as. Uh, square mileage mileage for um their city, so it's really comparable in a lot of ways, and they were dealing with, you know, they are dealing with. How do they get trash service to or or sewer or any of these different things to areas that have so many fewer people? And I thought the sidewalk questions uh from another commissioner were really good about how how we prioritize and and how we work through that. Thank you for taking the time.
Uh, Commissioner Miller, another question?
Yeah, just my last comment on what Donna said earlier. Um, yeah, Mike. I guess one thing I'd like to see us come up with. A plan as to how we're going to transition in these areas where there are very few homes. That we're banking this land for a big project. But we've got to make it livable and attractive for fifteen to twenty years. Because we don't know when that's going to happen, and we definitely don't want to do. Paul McKee to to anybody else. Um, so we've got these areas throughout the city. And we do these neighborhood plans. We just can't say, it's just, right now, we're not, I don't see that we're addressing that in a specific strategy. That they're going to be held, but they're going to be more of an asset, and I know money is not infinite, so. You know, are we even cutting grass in the cheapest and most effective way? Or, you know, what are we really doing? Are we taking an inventory of what we're spending in these areas? And making the most out of it, so. That's my last comment, I swear.
All good points, thank you. Um. Any last questions?
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you, and I do acknowledge that.
All right, very good. With that, I will pass the baton to Don for his executive director's report.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make one additional mention, uh, two actually, quickly. Uh, Bob Bennett, who's the director of of the Office of Cultural Resources. Um. He is also engaging some consultants that are looking and evaluating our historic district program. Uh, and that's a rook in progress, but the real thing I wanted to mention about is the city's GIS system. Uh, and the city is been progressive and progressive in using GIS. Obviously, uh, Esri uh and National Geospatial. All is making part of St. Louis be an epicenter for GIS. Uh, which also means some of our employees that work in GIS get stolen away uh to uh these other places. But I'm happy to announce uh that we're now in about his seventh or eighth month. A new person that works at PDA. Who is in charge of GIS has a staff here. Because we also do things with the toys that we have, the plotters and the computers and that type of thing. Uh, and he does training. Uh, he's here. Uh, the IT department is very much involved in the whole system of GIS. Meaning location-based data, all that type of stuff. Uh, so with the servers and the and the systems, what I want to say is, in addition to the staff here. There are seventy people across the city that have used and get trained on using the licenses of GIS. So we want to advance using GIS more and more. Uh, and that's a good thing. Ingram Grebel, who's here, uh, came from Rice University and uh is doing a great job. Uh, we also uh have made it so PDA will be able to pay a hundred percent of his salary. Provided the new budget goes through. Uh, and the IT department will also have somebody that does the systems, stock type of stuff. Hire is the, oh, contracts with the software and whatnot. And uh, I think that's all a very good thing, and he'll start part of the the new fiscal year. By going to an Esri conference for GIS people from around the country. Uh, mainly at the expense of Esri, uh, and a little bit from the city, uh, so. GIS is one of the ways we can help fit things together, so I'll just leave it at that as my report.
Excellent. Thank you, Don. Um. Well, we are only thirty-seven minutes away from the three-hour mark. So, not too bad, folks, not too far.
I think we can keep it going.
No, I appreciate everyone's time, as always. And with that, I guess I'm looking for. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Previous role, if that happens this meeting.
It's been moved and seconded. I I think that's all we need, so. Thank you all very much, and uh we'll see you next month.
Thanks, all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, all.